Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Glassboro zoning board of adjustment regular business meeting for May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Terry, can you read the opening statement, please?
Pursuant to the open publics meeting act, I hereby announce that adequate notice of this meeting as required by said act has been provided by adopting the schedule of regular monthly meetings for the year two thousand and twenty-two, which schedule was posted on the Borough Hall bulletin board, now to the South Jersey newspapers, and filed with the Borough Clerk.
So, everybody please rise for his flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating and just.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Alice.
Here.
Mr. Moonen.
Here.
Ms. Camiola.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Present.
Mr. Jimenez.
Here.
Mr. Santorius excused. Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Perner.
Present.
Mr. Casabun.
Here.
Ms. Adamson.
Here.
All right, everybody's here. Mr. Alice, can you swear in our professionals?
Yes, thank you. Um, I would ask each of you to raise your right hand, and each, do each of you swear firm testimony about to give is true and correct to best your knowledge of information, I believe?
Aye.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, uh, members, that was two yeses. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody has a copy of the minutes. Anybody have any questions, comments, or anything? If not, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's see. Bills. Everybody sees the bills on the page. Do we have a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. All right. Any incoming and outgoing correspondence that we have?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Public comments that are non-agenda items only. Does anybody from the public wish to come forward? Do I have a motion to open the public portion?
So moved.
Second. Anybody? Do I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Aye. Somebody has to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have ZB twenty-two dash zero-two, Chosen Restoration, Dumars Burgess, fifty-two William Street, block thirty-four, block twenty-six. It's in the zone I-one. Looking for used variance to rebuild single-family dwelling that collapsed during repairs in I-one. Gentlemen, could you please, whoever's going to speak, come to the podium?
Yeah. And whomever is, do we, is everybody going to testify, just a two and a three or two? Okay. Well, then, the two individuals that are going to testify, I ask each of you to raise your right hand, and do each of you swear firm testimony about to give is true and correct to best your knowledge of information, I believe?
Yes.
That's two yeses, so it's a yes, yes. And now, just for the record, before you get rolling, just identify yourselves, so we can just start.
My name is Dumars Burgess, owner.
Okay, and Dumars Burgess, what relationship to the application do you have? Are you the owner of the property?
Yes, I am.
Well, there you go. And sir?
Milton Moore, and I'm a representative of Chosen Restoration.
Okay. And when you say a representative, a principal in a, in a corporate environment?
Yes.
It's an LLC or something?
LLC, yeah.
Okay, well, there you go. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Take it away, Mr. Chairman.
Proceed.
Sorry, I never did this before, all right. Um, so, we, we, we're in the process of trying to renovate the house. During the renovation, the house collapsed. So, we were told that we couldn't make, do any more work on the property until we get, get it clearing through the zoning board. Um, so we're here on behalf of just trying to get the product, the project to move forward, um, to get the approval so that we can continue to build, rebuild.
Okay.
Well, you know, for the, for the edification or benefit of, of the board, you know, you're the owner now. Um, how did you come to own it? Like, do you, are you aware of the history? Because at some point, it was probably in an intact building, and then something happened to it. So, can you give a little kind of?
Oh, absolutely.
Trip down memory lane and then bring us to the present?
Absolutely, absolutely. It's a, it's a, it's a short trip, so that's, that's, that's great. Originally, I brought the property with a partner of mine's DNA. Um, this is a, about three years ago, we brought it out, right, for cash, thinking that we would use it for investment property. Um, however, um, the property was in, the condition of the property was worse off than we thought it. So then, you know, it's sad, it's sad for years and years and years. I have two kids going to Rowan, well, one going to Rowan, one coming to Rowan. Right now, I'm paying for her to rent from another house. Um, my youngest is in boot camp now. He'll be coming back in January, and he's planning on attending Rowan, too. So my wife and I said that instead of the property sitting there, and we continue to pay taxes on it, maybe we go make a, get the house ready, since my daughter will be going to law, I mean, going to graduate school here. And, and my, my youngest, who is my nephew, will be coming back from boot camp, and he plans to go to Rowan. So instead of paying for two bedrooms someplace else, might as well make the investment ourselves, because right now, I think we're paying over six hundred bucks a month for her to stay in another house. Um, and she's planning on going to, um, continue to get her masters in psychology. So she, she'll have four more years, he'll have four years. That's just a lot of money, just to be paying somebody else. Um, so I went to my partner and bought the property from him, um, because we were just paying taxes on it anyway. Um, we thought that the rebuild was going to be a lot cheaper, and we thought that we, we would get through the project a lot faster. Unfortunately, the house fell down, so, you know, like, it was the house, the, the, it was like a tinker house, right? Um, so now, we just want to try to figure out how to move the process, the project forward.
Do you have any, like, professional plans, drawings, surveys, or anything?
If it's okay, I'll get that, um.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, sure. And y- 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 you have a number of copies of them?
Yes.
So you should start with the, the table there. There's the planner of the woman, and the man is the engineer.
So, so, when, when you say a number of copies, I just have the copies that I was going to enter as an exhibit, so, um, I don't believe.
What's the number?
We'll start with number one.
Well, you, you mean you only got like one copy?
Uh, yes, I only got one copy of.
Each one.
Of, of each one, that I'm going to, uh, uh, bring as an exhibit.
Right, right. Well, the idea, okay. Well, the idea was to make it more of a collaborative effort, since you want the relief and.
We, we all need to see.
Yeah, we would have appreciated you, you jumping in and springing for them copies. Do we have a copy machine nearby?
Can I get into the findings?
Yeah, I didn't know how many copies.
Well, more than one.
Gotcha.
Would have been a safe guess. Anyway, let's see if we can't get some copies.
Well, well, the one is a, a sign and steel, you know, survey, so.
Kabish, yeah, but, but, and, and, and that's, and that's a good springboard, but, but nonetheless. And, and, and then what else do you have? So we save her a trip or two.
Do you have anything that shows, like, how far the side?
The survey, the survey, that's the number one document.
No, I was looking for a point.
Yeah, she had to say, oh, that's, she had.
You know, how far away from me?
Uh, when it was constructed.
When it was construed, when it's constructed, yeah.
Well, while she's, while she's making those copies, do you know when it was erected, when it was constructed? More or less?
I have no idea.
No, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah. It, it, it had to be, it had to be in the early nineteen hundreds, the way that it was built.
Yeah.
No, that's, yeah, you could, yeah, you could tell often by, you know, timber or whatever, or how it's framed out and things like that.
Um, yeah, it was, it was not according to code, that's it.
Well, because there probably was no code, is what you're saying. So it was pre-code.
It definitely was not.
Pre-code.
Was no two-by-fours, it was three-by-fours, four-by-fours.
What they called the good old days.
Yeah.
Whatever they could find.
Are you, is this plot, uh, land in between two houses?
Yes.
They're, okay, so I saw the right spot when I drove out.
Right, and, and you're here because you're in an LI zone, and you want to have a residential dwelling in an LI zone.
Right.
And so, our vice chair just asked you about, are there residences on either side? In other words, suggesting that this, this is a residential use.
Yes.
And there are other residential uses around you.
Yes.
So, so there's one on either side, or there's some more in the area?
Yes, um, actually, the entire street is, is residential on the side where the house is. Um, across the street is a factory or something. As a matter of fact, when we, we bought the house for cash, we just thought it was a residential area. We didn't know it was like, at some point.
An L-I zone.
It was L-I, which then limited, you know, a lot of things, which I didn't know about when I purchased the property. Um, but the property is here, and it's costing me like thousands of dollars every year, right?
Well.
Regardless of do something or not.
Yeah, and I think anyone who undertakes a project is going to have a similar sentiment, because they get in the middle of it, and then there's always something, you know? That is, yeah, not for the faint of heart, right, if you're a developer, right?
Definitely is not.
Yeah.
Definitely is not. And, you know, our intention is not to expand it anymore than what it, what it, what it, what it was in existing. We just kind of, we're just trying to build right on the footprint until it fell.
Well, that's, that's what you're fixing on doing, because that was the representation in your application, that you're going to just honor the, the foundation and the footprint. And, and what kind of foundation exists there? Is there a usable foundation?
Yeah, it's a block foundation. So, uh, actually, as a part of the approved, um, plans that we had before, um, we had the permit and everything, approved plans. The back of the house was actually coming down as a part of the approved construction plans. Um, the front or the sides were, were not supposed to come down, um, but once we took the roof line off, you know, once again, it was built like thirty-six inch on centers, I mean.
And then things let loose, right, right.
So that, that's what happened, but it's the same foundation, um, and we actually have approved foundation repairs, too, that, you know, to, to build right on the same foundation.
I want to ask you a question. Was there anybody when this house went down around the property?
No. No, our guys, uh, we had a crew there that was working, and so it didn't collapse like where it collapsed on top of anybody, but you could see the walls were buckling in, it was coming, yeah.
Time to run.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, uh, as a matter of fact, when I went to go see it, and it was, I was like, well, I'll take a picture and send it to my wife, it was like, are, are, is this what we, we were doing, you know? Um, but at the end of the day, it's better to do it right than to try to even, to do it. We wanted to sit here for, for another hundred years, hopefully.
Agreed.
Now, are you going to be doing this yourself, or are you hiring a contractor?
I'm not, yeah.
We have, we have Chosen Restoration right here.
Yeah, we, we're the contractors that was contracted to do the renovations, and we're going to complete it, yes. I'm good with doing basic stuff. That house is about, that house by far was not basic. Very interesting.
And what other uses across the street?
It seemed like there's a warehouse, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, it might have been something that said owned by the school district, like a truck setting out there.
Oh, wait, isn't it, is it Copart across from you? Copart, the other thing?
On the other side of Grove Street.
I think it's Public Works right across.
Oh, yeah, they got the Public Works right, yeah.
Public Works, that's the yard.
Where Ms. Adamson's referring to, right. Because you got Public Works, and they're not going anywhere, and then you got Copart, and that's a hell of an operation, yeah.
I think Public Works, their, their diesel mechanic did work on the local school buses, so that's.
So that's why I saw the school bus.
That's why there, there are a lot of school buses there for that reason, for repairs.
Obviously, the copier is not warming up very quickly.
Well, no, 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 they're, they're, I mean, it, it ultimately, I think, it will make it easier for the board just to, you know. So, we're, we're still getting traction.
Yeah, I saw, and, and, and that's on me, I had to, I had the big approved plans, and then I made a separate copy, because I just thought I was going to give an exhibit, and it was going to get passed around, so.
Yeah, well, but, but it, it don't go faster.
All right, got you.
And then also, it's for everybody's protection, so, so now you have something in the record, you know, you got, you know, so later, it's no confusion. Not that, you know, the building's going to fall on us, but if something happened, you know, boom, you, you got it, here, here it is.
But we're here now, so.
Right, exactly.
And I'd rather stand and sit.
Right, just, just, just.
Sitting all day.
Yeah, we want to get it squared away for you.
So you did receive a permit for the construction part?
Yes.
When was that?
Um, on March the fourth. I have a copy here.
That is here.
Yes.
Yes, here.
Yeah, I mean, what, what brought you back here was, was when you were messing with the roof and then the, the other walls, and now you're beyond what the ordinance would permit you to just reconstruct your, now you're rebuilding, you know, the whole thing, essentially.
And the, the, uh, construction, um, official, uh, basically, because everything was being rebuilt on the whole back half, he took a letter from the architect, you know, basically saying that the same construction that they approved with just two-by-six walls on the exterior, that was already going to be on the back end of the house, and then we gave them a foundation repair, uh, uh, plan from the architect, so.
Okay.
Sound like water dripping.
So there's no change to the location of the driveway, or, uh, the building footprint is exactly the same footprint, and there's no change to the driveway or the access to?
So I know the driveway was barely a driveway, it was like grass covered, and then it looked like it was a driveway there, but we couldn't, I couldn't figure out. The only reason we concluded was the driveway was there was from the curb side, that it was lower, but it was all grass on that side. The other side had trees and a bush. So, I can't remember if the plans moved the driveway or. No, there was no change at all. What happened was the borough came through and I guess put in sidewalks, so they put an apron on the side where I guess they deemed the driveway to be, because on the other side was trees, so there's.
Well, they saved you that money.
Yeah, so there, so there's.
An aggravation.
Well, I'll be honest, I was happy when I saw it.
Yeah, yeah.
I was like, okay, we got a sidewalk now, you know, that was progress, now we just need a house to go with the sidewalk.
So are you looking to, uh, improve that driveway, you're going to asphalt it or just don't gravel down, or what's the intention for the driveway area?
I'll be honest, I think we're going to have to look at the cost with everything going up, um, you know, like, we already have a loan, I have to see what the cost of the ultimate construction is now, as compared to, and then see kind of what's left over to see what we go forward to do. So, that's where we're holding our breath to see if we can get the construction done at a reasonable price, you know, I would prefer to have it concrete. I just think that's, that's better over a longer period of time, but it might, you know, two-by-fours and sub fours all went up. For those of you, you know, if you haven't heard. Thank you.
Whatever you want, I'll just, well, right around there, guys. Might be just easier to do that.
Thank you.
Come.
Gracias, Terry. So now, let's get back, we, we, while, uh, thank you, uh, if I may, Ms. Van Farrelly. Uh, the board secretary went out and was kind enough to make copies along with, um, with Mr. Pierpont, so we have copies of various documents. Now, we had interrupted ourselves to get these copies made, and while you were gone, Ms. Van Farrelly, just so you know, we, we, we still continue to talk about the, the application. But you were, I think, getting ready to introduce this particular document I'm holding up, which is a survey of the premises?
Yes, sir.
All right, so are you looking to have this marked A-one?
Yes.
All right, and what is A-one?
A-one is the, um, professional survey, uh, done by Ewing, uh, land surveyors, uh, Ewing and Associates, um, of the, uh, property.
All right, and did you show our engineer a sealed version of that survey, and our planner, so they're satisfied that it exists?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's a, um, a sealed copy.
Good, all right, well, thank you. So, so tell us, well, that, that's the springboard, Mr. Chairman. Here we are, we're at A-one, so take it away. This should give you some, if you want to.
All right, so we're using a, we're doing a two-story frame dwelling?
Correct.
How many bedrooms are you planning?
Three.
Three.
Plans are right here.
Well, then, why don't we, since, since we're going to jump around a little bit, why don't we walk through the documents? So then, then there's another document that's identified as Thomas Robinson, and it's, it's, he's a, yeah, he's an architect. I'm trying to see if there's a, a title on it.
Site plan.
So, just his site plan?
Yep.
So we're going to mark this as A-two, yes?
Okay.
All right. And then, you, you agree that this is prepared by, uh, Mr. Robinson as an elevation for the proposed dwelling?
Yes, sir.
Or, rather, a, a, a layout of the site, frankly, I apologize. All right, and then, I was premature, because we have another document, we're going to mark this A-three.
Okay.
And would you agree this is an elevation of the proposed dwelling?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, there's also, um, a couple of more elevations, which will be marked sequentially, A-three, A-four, and A-five?
Okay.
Okay, all right. And then, we also have the proposed, see, what is this? This is, well, this is actually building detail. Um, got a couple of these, so we're going to mark this as A-six. Again, by the architect. Again, by the architect, this is the, uh, interior layout. We're going to mark this as A-seven. And an additional, uh, interior layout, again, by the architect, that'll be finally A-eight. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, we've got this out of the way, and, uh, take it away.
So this is going to be three bedrooms?
Yes, sir.
And three baths?
Two and a half baths.
Two and a half. And then, are you finishing off the basement?
No, sir.
So it's just going to be concrete?
Yes.
I'm confused.
Yeah.
My third page shows dining, first floor having a dining room, living room, kitchen, and a bath, and three bedrooms upstairs. But now, as I'm toward the end, I'm seeing a kitchen, family room, and a bedroom, and two bedrooms, and a bath, or something, on the first floor.
Right, so A-three is the existing, what was existing?
Ah.
That was the existing layout of the house.
Good, because I didn't mind that layout.
Okay, all right.
So the whole, the whole exterior structure remains the same as built, but the interior just changed the layout.
Ah, I get it now, thank you.
And right now, I think somebody was living in there, so. In the living room, or something.
I like this, this is, yeah.
So the exterior, what's done, will resemble the former exterior, kind of? Okay, um, the materials also, it had to be made of different materials back then.
Yeah, it was made of wood. It wa, it had aluminum siding, and then it had wood siding underneath.
Oh, so there was some siding added much later on?
Right.
Okay, and you're proposing now to have it also sided again?
Vinyl, vinyl siding.
Vinyl siding, though. Okay, I got you, thank you.
So if you have three bedrooms, you need, I believe, two parking spots. Um, you won't get two parking spots in there, in that driveway.
Nope.
Because you got sixteen feet from the front of the house to the right-of-way line, and you need eighteen feet. You'll get, you'll get one parking spot. How many bedrooms do you have now?
Three.
Three, so it's a, it's the same condition they had before.
Right.
And it will remain. And there's no garage, of course, right?
No.
Okay.
Any more questions from the board? All right, let's see what our professionals have to say. Is there any?
Um, so, since this is a used variance, there's some brief testimony that we require, um, uh, is it your testimony that this won't have a, will not have a negative impact on the adjacent properties? It's a, it's the existing use, there's a residential use, and there's also residential, uh, dwellings on either side that exist already.
Yes, ma'am.
No negative impact, um, and there's no, it won't impair the zone plan and the zoning ordinance?
No, ma'am.
Because you're going to say, I'm just going to put back there what was there before it fell down.
Correct.
And you did give us a signed sealed survey, so that's what I was looking for, and, uh, it's your testimony that this dwelling will fit in this building envelope?
Yes, ma'am.
That's here. Okay, thank you. I have no other questions.
Discussable.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, I'll just go quickly through my letters. The, the documents, the exhibits that we received answered a lot of the questions that they had in this letter. But I'll, I'll touch on them quickly. Number of bedrooms, we've heard. I, I asked about the, uh, number of stories and the exterior door locations. It does look like the doors are basically going to be the same spot. Is that right, the front door and the back door?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, we read number three in my letter, we have received the survey, which we just spoke about. There are, um, for this zone, I, I believe several existing non-conforming setback conditions for that, um, for the foundation, the front yard and the side yard. Uh, it's basically closer to the front corner of the property than, than what's called for in that zone. But those will be existing non-conforming conditions that aren't changing with the application. And then, um, finally, I would just, did want to talk about the driveway again. Uh, the ordinance does call for the driveway, driveway of this size for it to be paved, um, and, and as of right now, there is a, there is a driveway, it's, it's a driveway. And it's, it's probably going to function as a driveway, so I believe it should be improved in some way, as opposed to just leaving it as, as dirt. I think they could select on how they would improve it, but it shouldn't be left as.
So what he, what he's, what he's trying to say is, we've got a little bad news for you. We really need that paved, and, yeah. And it's, yeah, it needs to be asphalted.
And since you need two parking spots, can you move that driveway to the other side of the house?
Can we?
Well, that would require reconstructing, you know, some new curb that was put in there.
Right.
Um, and, and, and when the borough or whomever put in that sidewalk, they, they put in a driveway for, because the, the, that area of the yard had the appearance of having a existing driveway. So that's why the apron is there now.
Can, can they make the driveway a little bit longer? It looks like.
Was it sixteen or eighteen?
They ended at the beginning of the house, but the house, you know, in dents and, and out like that, is it possible that they could get enough thing there to get two cars in?
No. Yeah, I don't, I don't think so either. Yeah, I don't think there's quite enough room on, um, based on this survey, there's not quite enough room in front of the, uh, house area or on the side to quite have a proper driveway with a setback from the property line.
Do you, do you want to publish the option to the gentleman about?
Yes, to someone, ask Mr. Pierpont.
Okay, well, okay.
Possibility of moving the driveway over to the other side.
The answer is yes, I can answer that question. You're at the zoning board. Now, Mr. Pierpont might have a, a different opinion, practically speaking.
That's what, that's what.
Yeah. Do you swear firm testimony about to give is true and correct to best your knowledge of information, I believe?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
So.
Clark Pierpont.
Clark Pierpont, zoning officer, Borough of Glassboro. So, according to the survey, it looks as if the driveway could be moved to the other side. However, the more I think about it, we did just repave William Street,
Ooh.
which would put a five-year moratorium on opening the street. Street opening would be required to move the apron. So I'm not sure moving it in the immediate future is something they'd be allowed to do. Uh, in answer to whether or not they could extend the driveway, any extension of the driveway would require a three-foot setback from the property lines, so you would never fit a car between the house and the property line.
Could they make it wider, like some of the ones on Heston, where they, they made it, you go in one driveway, but, but you depart two people, two side by side?
They would have to open the apron to twenty feet, which would still require.
Same thing.
The same problem.
Same issue.
Same problem. We're trying to help you out, believe it or not.
I hear, I'm on.
It, it sounds like dollar signs, but we're just trying to play with it.
Certainly something they could look at in the future. Uh, I'm not sure that. Certainly something they could look at in the future, I'm not sure that, 'cause we use federal money for the paving, I'm not sure they could open the street.
I hear ya.
Is there any parking allowed in front of this property?
Not between two AM and six AM.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, board members, let's get back to the engineer's comment, which really spoke to his position that not only is asphalt preferred, it's frankly required by your ordinance, unless there's a compelling reason not to require it, you would typically require it of the applicant. What's, what's the consensus, is there some compelling reason, other than just cost?
No, we, I, I, I don't have a problem with either putting asphalt or concrete down, I just, we'll have to look at the cost of either or.
Well, asphalt probably cheaper, but, but paving's paving, it's asphalt or concrete.
So either or is, is fine, I would prefer concrete, I just wanted to see what the cost is.
The ordinance doesn't specify material, it just says, you know, it says paved, meaning a hard surface.
Yeah, so that's fine.
Okay, cool, all right. So is the board, the board appreciates that, or understands that, and is okay with that? All right, well, it looks like we got a meeting in the month, so that's, that's good, well, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right, with that being said, I'd like to open, I need a motion to open to the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Anybody from the public would like to speak about this matter?
Move, we close the public session?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Okay, I, 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 I want, I want this to be in the positive, but I don't know what I'm supposed to say. Put me out here.
Well, no, 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 you know, I think-
I wanna approve it, but I don't know what, what things I have to add to it to, to make it right, 'cause there was so much going on.
Right, I think all you have to say fundamentally is that you're looking for a motion to grant Chosen Restoration slash New Mar Burgess Use Variance Relief to, I'm gonna cheat from our expert land use board secretary, Use Variance to Rebuild Single Family Dwelling That Collapsed During Repairs in a, in an L I zone, or-
I move what he said.
And that also would include the pre-existing bulk relief for the pre-existing non-conformities, and I think that's it, that's about it. And anything else adduced at the hearing, which always is the case. Is that your motion?
That's it.
I second the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second motion.
All right, we'll call it.
Mr. Harvey?
Four.
Mr. Perner?
Four.
Mr. Smith?
Four.
Mr. Jimenez?
Four.
Ms. Camiola?
Four.
Mr. Mooned?
Four. Congratulations.
Hey, fellas, nice job, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good to see you. Now, what we'll do is, a resolution will be prepared, it'll get memorialized at the next meeting. So, Mr. Pierpont knows it was approved, and, you know, we're in the process, okay?
All right.
All right, take care.
All right, do we have any reports?
I don't, because we didn't have a meeting, they canceled it.
So it worked out?
It worked out. At least they didn't invite the owner.
Mr. House, do we have anything?
No, quiet, we'll, we'll have an action-packed, what is this, May, June? We have a few applications, but nothing for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
No new business? No old business? Nothing from the public? He's been so quiet the whole time.
The public declines.
All right, our next meeting date's gonna be June sixteenth. I suggest everybody bring supplies, it's gonna be a long night.
We have three appeals so far for that night, so. We're gonna please let you know we'll not be able to attend, it will be a longer meeting than usual.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.